My iPad says one. I don't think that's actually attached to anything. I think it just has its own time. It is one o'clock on Tuesday, May 3rd. This is the regular city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, if you stand with me, I will lead the pledge and invocation.
Pledge to lead and certify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand with me. Dear God, thank you for giving us today. Thank you for giving us the rains we have had and are predicted to have later this week. Thank you for giving us a great country to live in, which allows us both to practice our freedoms, but also practice self-governance. Also be with our graduates as they start on their own paths and with their families as they watch your children bloom after years attending. Please be with us as we meet today and please help us make wise decisions. In your name we pray. Amen. Okay, we have two sets of meeting minutes, and I guess we'll probably just go one at a time. Was there any changes to the April 25th minutes that we need? All right, they will stand unless, stand as presented. And then April 19th commission meeting minutes? Any changes there? All right, then they will also stand as presented. Next, we have a public comment. This is a time for anybody in the community to come and talk about something that is not on the commission agenda. We do have two people scheduled. If you do come up, we'll give you 30 minutes total for public comment time, five minutes for each spokesperson, or around about then. Please, if you come up, state your name, who you are, and we'll get going. But since we have two people listed, I'll call up them in order that I have here. So Oscar Rivera, is he here?
Yep.
Yeah, I have you wanting to talk about the at Astra soccer program. Come on up and...
Hello, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Good.
Very good.
Pretty good.
Good.
Well, as you can tell, I'm having some company now. If you remember last year, we were here proposing this same project where we were bringing a soccer academy located in Barcelona, Fundación Marcel. They were going to work with these kids for three and a half weeks. The original, the original idea was that they were going to select one kid, one of our players, the best that they considered. Every practice, every game was filmed. All that material daily was sent to Barcelona. So their department of analysis were going to be the ones who will be selecting that player. After seeing how we work and the talent of all these kids, they ended up selecting three of them, and with Carlos also is the fourth one. I would like to introduce them. The first one is Aliá Rodríguez, a middle schooler from Horuska.
Hello.
Actually, the last three weeks, he was the MVP of their soccer team.
Wow.
Now, Jesús Dosal, a middle schooler from KJ, Canada Henderson. Eric Ramos, student of Holcomb High School. And Perlicus Galero, he's also an eighth grader in Horuska.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
By the way, I would like to thank the high school because they were the ones who allowed us to use the stadium for the whole camp. And it's something that I personally really appreciate. All right, now, part of the activities where we have been making from the last two months is that we organized one day tournament for all the adults team here in town. All of them were very happy to contribute to all this program. Why? Because two years ago, I was the first and only crazy one putting 12, 13, 14 years old playing against adults with the objective so that they will raise their level, talking from my experience on there and on the rest. All right, that happened to me and that pretty much happened all around the world. And like I say, I was the only one believing in that talent I was saying from a long time ago. All their parents and the rest of the kids we have, they are very involved in this. Our next activity is this Saturday with the multicultural event that will be, will taking care of the place, excuse me, at Stevens Park. We're going to be part of the parade also with all our players and just to present and every one that will be attending that event can know and admit all our players and what we're doing and what is our goal for the last four, five years. Before they decided Fundación Marcel to come here to Garden City, they were like, several little town, what's there? But I was sending all the videos of their games. They were like, wait a minute. And even geographically, we are part of their plan. Why? Because in four years, the work will be here, we are in the middle of three possible host cities, Denver, Dallas, and KC. And after seeing the talent of these kids and the way we're working, they decided, let's go. Before coming here to Garden City, every time they went out of Spain, they would go only for one week. I was trying so hard to have them here for at least three weeks. They spent a month. Okay? Why? Because I was planning that we all, not only me as a coach, because before the camp, everything I teach those, these kids was what I learned on the field in front of thousands of people playing soccer when I was a pro. But that's not enough. I really need to keep learning from professionals that are playing a very, more high level than mine. One of the coaches that came is a former player of Real Madrid. Whoever is familiar with soccer is the best team in the world. Some others might not agree with that. And I was trying to pretty much being like a little kid, like a little sponge, train top school, every knowledge I could from them. And during the camp, after the camp, something here happened in these kids that now their effort, their attitude, their discipline is just other thing. Now these kids playing against kids their age, they are something else. Would you guys please help me to pass this to Aliá? All right, to, to Aliá. There is a little presentation of this and what we are needing. Because what we completed until now is part of the funds to take care of their camp over there in Barcelona here in July, where we are traveling from July 9th to July 24th. Will be a two weeks camp where these kids will be interacting with kids their age from all around the world with the possibility that if they show what it takes to be part of their professional program, they could be recruited. And they will move there with their family and all their story will change completely for them and for all of us because everything good that happened to these kids is the good for all of us. That's very clear, for sure. And what we're needing right now is to complete funds for their flight tickets because all the activities we are having until now are not enough because before the time we have to travel. And that's why we are here to, as the city, in what way you guys could help us because this is something like, like I say, these kids are going to go and open doors. Everything good that happened to them is going to be the good for all of us, for all our schools, all the kids that are coming behind them. And that's pretty much what, what we're requesting. If there won't be any way that we could have any kind of help, mostly financially, to get this flight ticket program.
Okay. We'll take that into consideration. I mean, we don't, we can't really make a decision right now, but definitely we'll, we'll refer this back to the staff to see what they have to say. Do you know what the total is that you're about to, that you need to raise?
$4,500.
That's the total to?
Yes, because like I said, we already have different activities and we, thanks God, completed four. That in the beginning were going to be 10,000, but with, with all our work and the parents, we're at this point.
You've been busy, yeah?
Yeah, believe me.
Yeah. Well, congratulations to the kids and hopefully, you know, future success. And like the mayor said, we'll, we'll give this to staff and we'll see what we can do. Okay?
Thank you very much for the time and the attention and the opportunity to be here in front of you guys.
Yes, and thank you for your dedication to our youth, too.
Of course, and congratulations on where you're at.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Ask. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next on public comment that's listed person is Commissioner Pishney. Welcome.
Before you start your clock, I want to say, I appreciate people like Oscar working with young people and what he's doing with that soccer program. I've got three granddaughters playing soccer over in the Kansas City area. And Oscar, I still don't understand all the soccer rules. I need help with that. I am Juan Pishney. I'm a Fannie County Commission Chair, but I have been a resident of Fannie County since 1981, and I'm coming to you in both of those capacities as a resident and as a commission chair. I think Celine may have handed out to you a thing that I will refer to in just a little bit, so have your pens ready because I'm going to have you mark some stuff. And then lastly, I would say in my introductory comments, thank you for allowing me to come. And I'm not, I am used to time clocks because my fellow commissioner, Dwayne Grease, puts me on one every time I start talking. So I am used to. Several years ago, I became concerned about the nuisances of blackbirds and starlings and the noise, the health issues, the damage to vegetation, damage to HVACs and other things within our community. And then I've watched some of our businesses struggle with it. If you think about Walgreens and, and you think about Bank of the Southwest having to take out trees, and I really dislike taking out trees in western Kansas, that I contacted about a year ago, a prominent business person here in town who's involved in agriculture and visited with him, and he said, yes, we have a problem. I delayed moving forward because during the pandemic, we didn't have the human resources to be able to make field trips. And then early this year, I asked Anthony Reardon, who's an extension agent with our newly formed West Plains District, and he coordinated a visit by USDA folks and a Kansas State person out of Manhattan to come out. And you'll see at the top of that handout, it mentions that they came out in February. And they did. They spent a couple of days out here touring and talking to businesses. As a matter of fact, they visited with your city electrical folks and found out some of the problems they're having with the birds and the costs and inconveniences that are caused by these birds. Then a person by the name of Jason Klauff, who is a USDA representative, put together the document that you have in front of you. And what I'm here today about, and I had mentioned to the mayor, I just wanted to be here as public comment. I'm asking for you to consider this document and to consider this issue. And if you are interested in pursuing it and having more conversation, then maybe it becomes a business item on your agenda sometime in the future. So I'm definitely not asking for anything today other than consideration. But I wanted to back up a half a step. Between 2005 and 2010, we did have a person in this community addressing this bird issue. And it was funded through USDA by Congress, and it was, it was narrowed to confined feeding operations, feedlots and dairies. And several feedlots in our area were recipients of that service. But the funding went away in 2010, and then the bird population, the bird issue started to explode from that point on. But the feedlots, who I have talked to a couple of them in this process, said it was very helpful and very beneficial because it's costing them in a cost of gain fashion. It's costing our farmers from a yield fashion, and it's causing health issues, which we're looking at it from a health standpoint, since we have a mandate for public health at the county, because restaurants and hotels and other places are being impacted by this as well. And then my biggest reason for being interested in trying to address this issue, in addition to all the things that I've just referenced, is if I'm new and I said, I've, we've lived here since 1981, so it's hard for me to get an outside perspective sometimes. But if I'm coming into count, to town to visit, or if I'm coming into town to be one of your prospective workers, and I go to the hotel and the bird droppings are, you know, or I go to the restaurant and where I'm going to eat my food and the droppings, I just can't imagine that it's an attractive thing for us to be able to attract visitors and workers to Fannie County. So I am concerned about it. In this document, and I'm going to call your attention just to a few things because I know public comment is on limited time, but I would ask that you read the three, four pages of this document that Jason put together because I found it to be very concise, very informational, and I found Jason to be a very good resource. They are using the services that I'll highlight here in just a second in other places within Kansas. USDA has a wildlife service division that this runs through, and they're in other states as well as in Kansas. They are working with communities and feedlots and so forth with throughout Kansas. But I would call your attention and just put an X or a checkmark by these. I found these the most important. The one of them is about, well, two or three paragraphs down is description of damage. The next one, services provided, and they talk about how they were in here in February. Couple of more down, it's, the paragraph starts with due to the high number of food and water sources. But two of them on the first page that I think are even most important are the final two paragraphs, after surveilling and large flocks, if you would read those and focus on those. On the next page, the second paragraph, if you really focus on that, is what the observations were and what their concerns are about going forward. And then that next paragraph, the USDA Wildlife Services, talks about some of their services and so forth, and I think that's an important one to get a handle on. And then if you'll notice at the bottom of that second page, Jason has outlined three options. And in visiting with Anthony, in visiting with the business person, in visiting with Jason, we have termed that priorities, one, two, and three, in addition to his terminology of options, because priority one would get the best results. And so I just call your attention to that so that you can look through that. I know the mayor has already looked through that. I gave him a cheat sheet earlier, and so he had an advance notice about it. And then on the next page, he talks about the case in Fannie County will not be an easy one to solve. However, he thinks there's good opportunities. The final thing before I go to the last page is Jason is quick to caution us about not thinking of this as a short term fix, that this is an ongoing, we need to get from a, we need to minimize the issue and get to a maintenance level, but it will never go away. And it's not going to happen just in one year or maybe even two years. And he said in visiting with other folks, that's one of the expectations that doesn't get met is a quick fix. So I caution anyone to think that it's a quick fix. And then on the last page, and then I'll complete my comments, he gives a financial picture of what option one would look like, of having a dedicated person in the, in the county addressing this issue. This person would be a USDA employee, and then we would find funders, whether it be the county and the city or private and public. And I'm not even there yet as far as whether or not, what that funding looks like. But the funders would make an annual payment to the USDA Wildlife Services, and then that person would be an employee of that group. And lastly, we did talk about this as a business item yesterday in our county commission meeting, so I apologize to Megan for hearing this twice. But we did talk about it, and there is interest in our commission of moving forward with something, but we don't know what that something looks like yet. I've asked our, my fellow commissioners to digest this document, think about funding options, think about the right path to go forward. And that's simply what I would ask of this commission today is please consider what I've expressed because I believe it's something that is detrimental to what we're trying to do here in Fannie County, being a leader in the state of Kansas. And it's one thing that can be addressed at least partially going forward, in my opinion. So thank you very much for your time, and I don't know how close I was to that five minutes, but hopefully.
Nine minutes. Very good. Any questions?
Just thinking about this, this might be something for a joint meeting between the two governing bodies to maybe bring up. And I mean, it's good information that we'll need to look over, but maybe something where we have a joint, joint session that we can discuss it at that time, too?
Well, I thought, I thought even added to what you just said, Roy, is that maybe we have Jason come out and have him, because he is the expert. He's been involved in these things for a number of years, and we pick his brain, if you will, with regard to some of this stuff. But I wanted to start, I really appreciate Anthony Reardon and coordinating the field trip they made out here. And it was on some of the colder days when the birds were roosting. And I mean, it gave him a really good picture of what our issue is in Fannie County. But I think having him be available for something like that would be beneficial.
So Commissioner, are there other communities that are already doing this type of a plan that has been successful in?
Well, first of all, it was successful in the feedlots that used the plan back in 2005 to 2010 here locally. So we know there was that success. I know of Barton County Feeders over in Barton County that's used this program, and it's been successful. I haven't pressed Jason on other references at this point, but yes, there are others using the program because he has to be very careful about the privacy and getting permission to use those as references. And I haven't pushed him on that yet.
Yeah, thank you.
But we certainly can.
Do you know if the USDA is interested in helping to fund part of this as well?
It doesn't appear that way right now. It appears that it would be a local funding thing. The one thing I will quickly say, they call the funders cooperators. That's the terminology they use. And Jason did tell me that the funding, if, if, say you get 50% of the funding, then 50% of the services go to that cooperator. So, so that's why we would need to be careful how we do the funding so that we make sure the appropriate places and entities are getting the services as well.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds like we'll keep on, I think, I talked with Mike a little bit about this, and we'll keep going forward.
And I don't know, Mike, do you know who they talked to at the city? Because I know when they were on the field trip, they talked to somebody with the, with City Electrical because they went out and visited that area. But I don't know who they talked to at that point, but they, they expressed concern to Jason and the others who were there, were here.
Yeah, I talked to Mike a little bit about this, and he was already aware of the, the process and stuff, so.
Yeah, Mike's aware of everything, so.
He is? All right.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you for coming.
You're up.
All right, if there's any more public comment.
Oh, wait, I guess I should say, is there any other public comment? I was thinking, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, that's okay.
No, that's good. I wasn't used to, wasn't used to having that long a public comment in the first place, so I wasn't even thinking about it.
No problem. I want to say thank you to all you that are serving the community, especially this is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I'm very teaching, coming from 15 years in education, very appreciative of all of that, so.
Introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, Nathan Heck, Astra, that's my church. But I want to thank you all for your continued support as we work to make this community Cultural Day a success. A lot of things are coming together. It's just very exciting. We continue to hear great comments, community support, and anticipation in regards to this day on the 21st of May. And then we'll begin the process of bringing our community together even more and more. The goal of that day is to raise awareness of the uniqueness to meet our community neighbors and just bring everybody together. We're excited about that again. I want to say thank you for your support of that. We know and appreciate that our neighbors are just significant to each and every one of us. Everybody's a part of our community. My heart is to build up this community and make it a better place. I hope you've seen that proven in the last year and a half that I've been here in town, and we'll continue to do that more and more. But I want you to know that we, as a church, have started the process of working with a couple that was here just a few meetings back, making connections to resolve their issues within the city and get them into compliance with the city code. So we're doing our part to help out in that way as well. But as you know, from my last meeting, we finished the comments, or I was finished a meeting with the Leadership Garden City class, very excited about that. At the graduation banquet, I had the privilege to hear about the rich history of this area and some of the leadership that has been present in our community over the last 70-plus years. I'm very excited to hear that. I was very impressed by that. I heard tell of many obstacles that this community had overcome and people who've attempted to divide the community and really bully people in leadership. And I was very, kind of surprised by that. I heard how this community stood against the bullies, and it has made us a better community as we've come together and not given in to those that have attempted to divide the community. I want you to know that I believe in this community and blessed to be a part of it in every aspect of it. Each and every one of you were elected to stand for what is right in this community, and I'm grateful that you're doing that, to represent this community and to do what is best for all members of the community. And I thank you for doing that. I pray for each one of you on a weekly basis, and I pray that you continue to stand against the things that are bad in our community and to be strong community builders. Never give in to those that are trying to tear down our community. I will be there for each and every one of you if I can, however I can. I recently did a funeral for a lady that I'd never met. I was very surprised. Her name was Twyla Ellis, even surprised that the family connected with me. But in her autobiography, she wrote that she came to this area in 1950s and settled on a farm. She wrote about how the community and the family came together as they went through trial after trial after trial in farming in this community, what it was like back then. She talked about the hard work and dedication, not giving in to the circumstances or people that tried to destroy them. And she was able to identify several situations, and I was very surprised by it. But this is what Garden City's been built on, and I hope it is what will continue to be built on in our future. I believe that God has much grace and mercy for each and every one of us, and I'm grateful for that as we've come through these times in our community. He is a God that has so much love for us and each and every one of our community members, and a love that helps us overcome those that will attempt to destroy it. And every Sunday, I pray for all of those in our community, you guys as well, and every of the city commissioners and our state and federal leadership as well. And I just want to say thank you for your commitment and leadership and for standing strong for what's best in our community. So hopefully this encourages you as well. And that's all I wanted to say today.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment? All right.
Then we'll move on to item 6A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Month in Garden City, Kansas.
I'll make the motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
All right, there is a motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. So I will read the proclamation, and then do we have somebody? We have somebody here? We'll come down and take a picture. Okay, so the proclamation reads, "Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that..." that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and wellbeing and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation and whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, I Shannon L. Dick, Mayor of Garden City, do per hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-two as Mental Health Month in the city of Garden City and call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in the city of Garden City to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the needs appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Sign and seal this third day of May, twenty twenty-two. I will come up.
Yes, thank you. I, um, wanted to thank you for your time and attention. My name is Diane Elliott. I am the Social Emotional Learning Facilitator for Garden City School District. And, um, a couple of facts that, um, some people may not know. While one in five people will experience a mental illness during their lifetime, everyone faces challenges that can impact their mental health. About half of Americans will meet the criteria for a diagnosable mental health condition at some point in their life with symptoms starting by age twenty-four for seventy-five percent of people and by age fif- fourteen for fifty percent of people. So, um, Garden City USD four five seven, in partnership with local of Fannie County, also is offering some, um, opportunities to become better versed in dealing with mental health challenges. We have a class coming up May twenty-third for, um, parents, school staff, youth leaders, coaches, anyone who has any dealings with a young person is, is welcome to come. And it will help talk through, um, ways to support young people with mental health challenges. And if needed, connect them to, um, other professionals. So thank you very much for proclaiming May mental health awareness.
Thank you.
Next we have item six B. The governing body is asked to consider and proclaim, uh, May twenty twenty-two as Building Safety Month in Garden City, Kansas.
I move to approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Uh, do you have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. I'll go ahead and read this proclamation and then, I think I saw some people out in the hallway. Yeah. Alright. Whereas Garden City is committed recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and the central role of our homes, buildings and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disaster strikes. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of those buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers and others in the construction industry who work year round to ensure that the safe construction buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes that protect us in the buildings that we live in, uh, live, learn, work and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as snowstorms, tornadoes, hells, storms and floods. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, safety for all, building codes in action and the theme for Building Safety Month twenty twenty-two encourage us all to raise awareness about planning for the safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation and the creating of safe and abundant water supply to all of our benefit. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience and economic investment at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus and the federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I Shannon L. Dick, Mayor of Garden City, or City Garden City, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two as Building Safety Month in the city of Garden City and encourage all citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. Sign and seal this third day of May, twenty twenty-two. Deb, anything to, further to say?
So, uh, thank you guys, uh, thank you Mayor for reading that. We wanted to see how much content we could put into that presentation.
The font can't hit too much smaller.
Yeah. So, uh, we appreciate your support for this. Um, of course, we're, we're building safe homes. We also have had incidences or accidents where, uh, those that are building safe homes for our community have been injured. Uh, we want to make sure that we promote safety for those employees, so we can all go home tonight with our families. So that's the intent of it. I know, uh, representing of the southwest's can- southwestern Kansas Board Builders Association, I'll spit it out with you. We've got Justin here, he's also going to be putting, uh, some social media and so forth out to promote the safety. Justin, anything you want to say?
Just that we, just trying to make sure that everybody's understanding of why it's important to be safe on a job site and things like that. So from the Southwest Kansas Builders Association, we just wanted to kind of piggyback with Trent and make sure that it's a whole thing, not just coming from one or other. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Well, come down, do you have a picture for your social media?
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Alright, item six C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request to allow the mayor to proclaim the week of May fifteenth to twenty-first, twenty twenty-two as National Public Works Week in Garden City, Kansas.
I move to approve the proclamation as presented. I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. I will read this proclamation. It says, whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure facilities, emergency management and services that are, are vital importance in, to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life and wellbeing of the people of Garden City. And whereas the infrastructures, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are federally mandated first responders and the engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transport, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders and children in Garden City to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-two marks the sixty-second Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, there, therefore, I Shannon Eldick, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim the po- the week of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two as Public Works Week in the City of Garden City and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies the designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. Sign and seal this third day of May, twenty twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, Tyler Patterson, Public Works Operations Manager. And, uh, so this, this year for Public Works Week, we'll, uh, we'll be doing a handful of different things. Currently, uh, we have a snowplow at the high school. It's getting painted by the art class. So that, that'll hopefully be getting done this week, I think. And, uh, we'll end up showing that off at our Touch a Truck event, which is May first at the Barron's, uh, parking lot, like it's been previous years, I believe.
Not May first?
May twenty-first.
Okay.
May twenty-first. Um, we've also been working with the Communications Department and they'll be gathering a whole bunch of videos and pictures of different divisions and, uh, employees of those divisions. So that's the plan for this year.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item six D. The governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim May eleventh through seventeenth, twenty twenty-two as National Police Week.
I'll make the motion, we approve the proclamation as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And aye. All opposed? That passes. I believe we have Chief.
Actually, I brought my friend.
And your, and his friends.
Alright.
And I will read this proclamation at, or actually Deb will be reading this, Commissioner Euler. We're reading this proclamation at the, yeah, May thirteenth service, so.
We just want a picture.
You just want a picture?
Yeah, we want a picture of you guys.
That's easy enough.
And again, we're gonna have our ceremony on Fri- next Friday.
What time is, can you?
Thirteen May, at twelve o'clock, straight up noon. It'll be in front of the LAC. Everybody's welcome, so please join us if you're available.
Alright.
And we appreciate everything.
Alright.
Here on the final one.
Yeah.
Yep, we've got one more proclamation for you. Item six E. The governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim May first through seventh, twenty twenty-two as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in Garden City, Kansas.
I move to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and second, is there a, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. I will read this. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of the local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and the agencies of government and other levels. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerk services as the information center on function, see, serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county and international professional organizations. Whereas it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I Shannon L. Dick, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim May first through seventh, twenty twenty-two as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Garden City and encourage all citizens to extend appreciation to all Professional Municipal Clerks for their vital services that they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent. Sign and seal this third day of May, twenty twenty-two. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah.
Picture.
Yeah, we'll do a picture.
So thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, and I think want to take this opportunity to introduce you to Cory Longoria, who is the Deputy City Clerk as of yesterday.
Yeah.
We're doing a picture.
Didn't you see we came there?
Yeah. Yeah, right.
You're about day two and you're already getting proclamation.
We get everyone so we don't rush so much.
I was gonna say, you did coordinate that.
You're not sure.
It was accent.
I'll stand like this.
On three, one, two, three. Looks great.
Item six F. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request to allow under section, uh, six three five and six one through three the possession, consumption and sale of cereal malt beverages or alcoholic liquors on the sidewalk, street, uh, and public park area on the following gates and locations. Uh, June third, July first, July twenty-second, August fifth, all twenty twenty-two from eight thirty PM to ten thirty PM for adult swim night at Garden Rapids. And then August thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, from eight AM to two PM at Crazy Horse or the Siege Five K.
Welcome, Aaron.
So we, uh, decided to put an event in for every proclamation today, so you can come out and get a drink. No, we tried to consolidate all of our events into one item this year. Um, we did add another adult night after last year's, uh, requests for additional adult nights. So, um, we have four, last year we had three. So the additional day this year is July twenty-two. Other than that, this is, uh, this is all the events we ran last year with, um, cereal malt beverages. I know it says liquor on there, but the only thing we serve is actually cereal malt beverage. Any questions from anyone?
I move to approve the request as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, there is a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Next we have section seven, report this to the manager. I believe these are all presentations that you all have. If staff has anything else they'd like to come comment on, please stop me before I go on. Or if you all have any questions, feel free to voice them out. together, all the contract negotiations and any change orders, everything like that. So, with this, the amount requires an independent fee analysis provided by a third party. So, we have worked with V and IM in the past, and so they provided a independent fee analysis that pretty much keeps, says that HNTV's cost is in line with what professional services for these type of activities would be worth. So, with that, we ask for your consideration and approval of the task order.
So, Rochelle, will they be here onsite, or are these things that done over online?
Yep. So, HNTV is gonna have a representative, if not two representatives, out here three to five times a week. They already have lodging set up in the community. They'll have a trailer out at the airport for their permanent kind of office throughout the duration of the terminal construction project.
Thank you. I move that we approve task order number five between the City of Garden City and HNTV for construction observation and project closeout services for the new terminal building at Garden City Regional Airport in the amount of $2,018,276.07. Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Next, we'll move on to item 10A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution correcting conflicting resolution names for two resolutions, both designated 2903-2022. So, as background, on February 15th, 2022, the governing body passed resolution 2903-2022, of course, which authorized the removal of motor vehicle nuisances from certain properties in the City of Garden City, Kansas. And then on March 15th, 2022, staff, by which this memo means me, I believe mistakenly designated another resolution as resolution 2903-2022. This was to designate the future custom milestone addition as a RHID within the city. Both of these were passed, but we would like to make sure that they can be distinguished in our, within our records. I do apologize for this mix-up. Under the resolution as provided, it would designate the resolution passed on February 15th as resolution 2903-2022-A. And the latter resolution adopted March 15th, 2022 as resolution number 2903-2022-B. The alternatives are to approve the resolution as passed to rename these, or do not approve the resolution and direct staff how we should resolve this naming conflict. Staff does recommend alternative one. Fiscal note would just be the cost of publishing this resolution, which would be $188 from the usual deal.
So, is it a resol- are we making it a resolution number? So, what is, is it?
What is this resolution?
Yeah.
We don't, I don't wanna mess up the resolution.
The next resolution is 2908-2022.
Okay.
Okay. 2908.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2908-2022.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
That moves us on to new business. So, item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider approve the agreement for services between the City of Garden City and TerraCon for quality control and observation services for the new terminal building at Garden City Regional Airport in the amount of $87,000, or $87, excuse me, $87,609.50.
Good afternoon. Before you is the TerraCon Quality Control and Observation Services for the construction of the airport terminal project. Primarily, TerraCon is gonna be doing the quality control for the materials of the terminal, testing the concrete soil samples, structural still, everything like that that goes into building a terminal.
All right.
I'll make the motion. We approve the agreement for the services rendered as presented.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve task order number five between the City of Garden City and HNTV for construction observation and project closeout services for the new terminal building at Garden City Regional Airport in the amount of $2,018,700, or $276.07.
Sorry, Stuart, we're gonna test you with your large dollar amounts today. So, yeah, this agreement is with our architect and engineering firm, HNTV, to provide more of the paperwork services for the construction of the terminal. They will do payroll, certified payroll, all the federal regulation required paperwork, make sure that everything's all together, all the contract negotiations and any change orders, everything like that. So, with this, the amount requires an independent fee analysis provided by a third party. So, we have worked with V and IM in the past, and so they provided a independent fee analysis that pretty much keeps, says that HNTV's cost is in line with what professional services for these type of activities would be worth. So, with that, we ask for your consideration and approval of the task order.
So, Rochelle, will they be here onsite, or are these things that done over online?
Yep. So, HNTV is gonna have a representative, if not two representatives, out here three to five times a week. They already have lodging set up in the community. They'll have a trailer out at the airport for their permanent kind of office throughout the duration of the terminal construction project.
Thank you. I move that we approve task order number five between the City of Garden City and HNTV for construction observation and project closeout services for the new terminal building at Garden City Regional Airport in the amount of $2,018,276.07.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Wait.
And then hold it for a second.
Yeah. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we move item number one off the consent agenda and discuss that while Rochelle's here.
Yes.
Okay. So, we will pull item G1 off of the consent agenda, and we'll talk about it now and, and vote. Especially since, that way you don't have to sit through the review of all the funds if you don't want to.
Oh, I will. Thank you for the opportunity.
So, this is, or I suppose was, item G1, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the contract agreement between the City of Garden City and Croftland Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $26,179,047.80 for the construction of the Garden City Regional Airport Terminal Building.
Yep. So, with that, just a little background information, we've been working on this project since about 2016, multiple phases. We went to the bid out in February, and we now are in May. It took a while for the FA to review all the paperwork required for the grant funding as well as the Croftland Construction, our contractor, to get some of the information that the FA requested. Once that was all done, the FA said, yes, everything looks good, we're ready to go. And so, they provided the letter that we were awaiting for to concur with a bid award that you guys had previously approved in April, I believe. So, with that, that consideration is before you.
So, quick question. So, we approve this. When, when will construction commence?
Yeah. Basically, today.
Today?
Yeah. The contractor's onsite. We have a bunch of meetings tomorrow. It will take several months for them to mobilize and set up all the temporary structures, the fencing, everything like that. And then it'll probably break rounds late spring, or late summer, early fall. But they're ready to get moving. They've also already made some housing arrangements in town. They're part of our community. Some of their subs have as well. So, they will be on board and living with us for the next couple of years.
Sounds good.
Good deal.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve the contract agreement between the City of Garden City and Croftland Construction in the amount of $26,179,047.80 for the construction of the new Garden City Regional Airport Terminal Building.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Jumping back into earlier in new business, this would be item 12C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a contract renewal and extension with Revere Healthcare Solutions, Inc., otherwise known as GrowWell Clinic. Ellie, you wanna start us off?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As you all know, the city currently has a contract with Revere Healthcare Solutions, or what we call GrowWell Clinic. So, today we've invited Carmen E., the CEO and Chairman of RHS, to present to you his proposal for the contract moving forward. So, I will turn it over to Carmen E.
My name is Carmine Di Palo. I'm the Chairman and CEO of Revere Healthcare Solutions. But the least valuable player, the most valuable players are here. We have four nurse practitioners at GrowWell and a registered dietitian. We have Amber Lyne, Whittington, and Marilyn Douglas for our nurse practitioners team, and Julie Tool as our registered dietitian. So, today I will take a few minutes to, to give a little bit of background on GrowWell. GrowWell was started in 2011 by another operator that went out of business. And Revere Healthcare Solutions reopened the clinic seven years ago in June 2015. At that time, the city was the only employer using the clinic with about 850 people enrolled in the clinic. Today, we have eight employers, and we have 2,300 members. The clinic obviously has expanded, has expanded to the point where we will have a, an additional section added to the current space starting July 1st. There will be renovation for the entire space. And therefore, we are transitioning with this extension of the agreement to a situation where the city is no longer responsible for the lease, which has been actually the case until, until now. And we will substantially incorporate all the changes that have been occurring, especially in terms of utilization. There is a graph, page three of your presentation, that I think tells the entire story. I apologize for the amount of numbers, but I think they are, they are very important to tell the entire story. So, first, let's look at the colors. In white, you have the visits per year for urgent and primary care. These are the visits when the patient comes to the clinic because he's experiencing a symptom. Then you have wellness, which are actually all the part of the program that relates to prevention. The patient does not have any specific reason, is preventing causes of, of illness. We have added in September 2021, I think that it's the right month to talk about this, it's emotional wellness. So, we have through telemedicine, a social worker that's starting September the 1st last year has delivered telemedicine-based mental wellness. And then in red, we have a little bit of an issue from an operational point of view, which is no-shows. So, situations in which the patient forgets to cancel a visit. It's important when you look at 2018 as a baseline. 2018 was the first year of the contract that is currently in force. And you look at the white and gray area, you can see about 1,800 visits with a patient that is seeking urgent care, and 1,200 visits, which are actually health risk assessment and wellness. When you roll forward to the last 12 months, ending March 31st, 2022, the last, the last par, you can see that the total amount of visits excluding no-shows and excluding mental wellness has increased 20%. But the real story is told by looking at the breakdown of the visits. You can see that urgent and primary care visits, which are the ones with higher value, because for the city are actually a substitute of visits that happen outside, possibly at higher level of acuity. So, specialty or even ER visits have increased from 1,800 to 2,700. So, plus 50%. On the other side, wellness, which has been also less emphasized, has decreased 50%. When you look at those 1,200 visits that have become about 600 visits, are they are actually made up of 300 health risk assessment, so screening, plus 300 follow-ups. At the beginning of the, of the contract, for each health risk assessment, we were delivering three follow-ups. Today, the, my interpretation of the numbers is that we have incorporated a lot of wellness into primary care, simply because more and more members of the population have adopted the clinic as their main point of care, which is also a function of, obviously, the fact that the clinic is free to the patient, but also a function of the fact that maybe the alternatives have been less stable than our, our clinic. We think that today, as opposed to seven years ago, we have provided the community at large with an additional piece of healthcare infrastructure. The GrowWell Clinic that we found was a clinic that had operated with one nurse practitioner. Today, you have a clinic with four nurse practitioners, nutritional counseling, and, and telemedicine. This is the, the, the picture of the progression. So, if we keep in mind, plus 20% total visits, of which plus 50% of the visits that have more value, but also last longer. How does this compare with the promise of 2017, when the contract was signed? The, the contract currently in force has a promise on RHS side for 28 clinical hours per, per week. When you translate into clinical hours, what we have been delivering in the last 12 months, the clinical hours delivered to the city are 33. And in addition to that, each week, we have had 2.5 hours of nurse practitioner time essentially wasted, where there has not been a cancellation when the patient has changed his or her mind. So, in order to cure this asymmetry between what is contractually required and what we have delivered, essentially through adding other employers, there are two options that are submitted for consideration. One offer, and one option is to rebase the clinical hours of the new contract on the basis of what is the current demand of the population. So, option A reflects the 20% increase in total visits, of which 50% increase applies, applies to primary care. This will require additional money compared with the current contract. Option B is actually a situation, is a scenario whereby we will, over time, as we sell excess capacity that we have allocated to the city to other employers, not immediately, but over time, decrease the clinical hours allocated to the, to the city, essentially at the level of the current contract. So, offers two options. Option A, more hours at a higher price. The other option, option B, same hour, so, sorry, same price with an amount of hours that is in line with the car- in line with the current contract. It is, these numbers are also probably a little crowded, but the idea is to give you a snapshot of how, from an operational point of view, Option A and Option B compare with the current situation. So the current situation, you have four weeks per month and per year. Per week, the contractual clinical hours are 28, what are delivered are 33. You see the cost that the city is incurring today. What really matters, again, from a healthcare plan management point of view, is the cost per delivered clinical hours. When we look at the proposal, Option A, you can see that we propose to rebase the clinical hours per week at 34, substantially the 33 that we are delivering today, plus 50% of the motion. For an increase of total hours, contractual terms of 21%. So quantity delivered increases 21%. Let's look at the total like-for-like clinical cost proposed. The increase of the total like-for-like clinical cost is 9.5%. Therefore, we are increasing the quantity in excess of price. And the implicit result is that the price paid by the city for contractual clinical hours goes down by approximately 10%. When you look at the overall healthcare market, to give you an idea, the typical clinical hour paid by Medicare last year was subject to an increase of between 15 and 25%. So what we are able to do, because of how our organization is designed, is to include in the healthcare mix of the city, a deflationary element, which, especially in these current economic circumstances, I find a very important element to support the fact that we are doing, we are delivering healthcare in a way that is asymmetric to what is outside of our model. Option B is reported as a comparison. Option B, which would not be put in place immediately, but is the end point where we would land as we add additional employees, provides for taming down the clinical hours allocated to the 28 that are carried in the contract, so a reduction of about 15% compared with the 33 clinical hours that are implied in the 20% increase of visits. With an implied increase per delivered clinical hours, so we will keep the price, the total clinical, like-for-like clinical cost will remain the same, but because the denominator, oh, sorry. Because the denominator will go down from 33 to 28, the per-delivered clinical hour price will go up by 18%. So the two options available, as I said, is Option A, higher total dollar amount spent per year, increasing at about 10%, total hours increasing 20%, and average cost per clinical hours going down 10%, which, again, is the important metric to consider. In terms of how the progression of the contract will look like in Option A and Option B, you see the numbers, which imply about 2% or 3% inflation over the years. I think this is all I had to say. If there are more questions about the background of the clinic or the program, I will be very happy to answer.
Any questions?
So I have a question. So if we choose one of these options, so when does that contract run through?
The contract runs, the existing contract runs through November 30th, 2023. But because July 1st, we are taking on the lease for the office space that we occupy, the contract will need to be amended as of July 1st to reflect the changing parties paying utilities and leases, because today, the city is paying utilities and leases. July 1st, we take over the second suite, we take over the entire lease, and we take over all the utilities. So the lease and the change in the payer for all these costs serves as a catalyst for the restructuring of the contract.
I know in subsequent presentations, that Grow Well has really done a lot to help us maintain our insurance costs, you know, as far as our health insurance costs. And so if we, if we would choose to go ahead and increase it, like, say, Option A, that money would come from that overage fund that Blue Cross and Blue Shield has paid us back from, or?
Yeah, so this will come out of the 055 Fund, which we'll present in the first meeting in June. So we can incorporate the dynamics of the choices you make for this contract when we discuss that. But it would come from that same cost. As of right now, we do have those items broken out, where you see the lease costs, you see the utility costs. Those would all be absorbed into the cost to the Grow Well Clinic, since it's going to be part of the new contract. So we won't have those broken out, where when the city pays them, we're just paying that incorporated in our base cost. So if you choose Option B, our costs increase a little bit, but really not a whole lot. But really, the dynamic there is the Grow Well Clinic, and Carmen A. probably doesn't do justice to the clinic, saying that they're going to throttle us back over time as they add capacity. They don't have to do that. They, at any point, could say, this is your clinical hours, we're throttling the city. They provided an excess service to the city for some time to continue providing above and beyond hours. And so if we choose Option B, we would, those costs would stay ultimately about the same, but at some point, that would throttle back the hours available to city staff. We have added the Recreation Department, we've added multiple employees, so we've increased our load. And so Option A would have an increased cost, but it's the capacity that we are using at this point. So when we discuss the 055 Fund, I would highlight those changes and the expected increase in cost and where that comes from.
The only thing I have a question about is, so the no-shows, and I know that they're costing you money, and that they're not costing us anything, but it's costing time. So what's the plan, again? I was trying to figure out how that fit into the plan that you were, especially Plan A, how that's going to change?
The no-shows, unfortunately, is a problem in terms of not depressing utilization. So my, I'm an engineer, my approach would be, would be a very significant stick with a small carrot, because the cost, because the cost is very significant. So in Option A, we will keep going as we are, meaning trying moral suasion rather than any other option in order to decrease this issue that we have across all the employers. So with the city, it's particularly painful, because the city has the largest volume of visits. And almost counterintuitively, as visits keep growing, the percentage of no-shows keeps growing, which is something that, again, from an intuition point of view, is difficult to understand, but the numbers are saying, are saying that. Option B, we will incorporate in the 28 hours whatever is allocated to no-shows, because...
Okay, that's what I was not understanding.
So that's the difference in Option B. And Option B, as Jared was saying, I think, because of the size of the population, when we see the 20% increase in visits, is partly visits per capita. So people are using more on a per capita basis. But part is that the population served has grown over time. Therefore, Option B is there from the way the city employees have been used to using the clinic, which is, we get access today, if not today, tomorrow morning. If we go down to 28 hours, I personally feel like utilization will have an adverse impact.
Well, I move that we approve Option A for the Grow Well contract renewal and extension, just due to the incredible work that we've already seen being happening, so.
One second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or further discussion about this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 12D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve filling one vacancy on the Public Grounds and Tree Advisory Board.
Afternoon again. We have had a vacancy from Neil Hawley since end of December. He chose not to rerun for that position. Took us a few months, but Anthony Riordan has graciously volunteered to fill that position, and him being a horticulturist and that expertise seems to fit pretty well with what Public Grounds and Tree is doing. So I'm going to turn it over him and let you guys grill him, since he's got...
Readjust right here. Anthony Riordan, Horticulturist for Fiddy County and Scott County for the Extension Office. Questions?
Thank you for your work on the Blackbird and...
Yeah, I appreciate it. I didn't realize that was going to be this morning.
That's really impressive, so, yeah.
But, yeah, I work for the Extension Office. My job is to answer everyone's tree and lawn and plant questions that call into me, but also, I bring a lot of programming to the community. Essentially, I'm just trying to get as much horticulture knowledge out into the community in as many ways as possible. So if I can do that through this position, I am happy to do so. I also do have a history of working for the Parks Department before this position. I was the city horticulturist from 2015 through 2020. A lot of the landscapes around town and gardens that you've seen were my concoctions, so. I've definitely been in the community for a while, and I'm, you know, willing to help out where I can, and I appreciate your consideration.
Now I'll make the motion that we appoint Anthony Riordan to the term expiring in December of 2024.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
That passes. Thank you very much.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider to approve an appointment to the Zoo Advisory Board.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Like other city departments, the zoo has an advisory board. Normally, it's a seven-member board. We recently had one member who had to step down. That opening was posted, we received four applications. At the last advisory board meeting, they reviewed those applications and unanimously endorsed the application of Stephanie Haug. So we have those applications before you. You can agree with the advisory board, endorse another applicant, or give us some other instructions.
It's exciting that you had four.
It is really good.
That's very cool. So I move to appoint Stephanie Haug to the Zoo Advisory Board to complete the vacant term.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the main show here.
You're right.
Item 12F, a review of the Enterprise and Support Funds, Golf Course Number 70, Golf Course Building Number 71, Solid Waste Number 75, and Drainage Utility Number 79.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hello, Jared.
All right. So we'll start off with Fund 070, which is the Golf Course Fund. I have Clay and Jason are both here. I told them, rather than have them stand there and have to look pretty the whole time, I'll talk through the budget, and then I'll have them each come up. They both have information they'd like to share and give some updates on, and then would be available for questioning as well. So on the front page, starting with the revenues, most things are pretty typical of what we've seen in the past. I would draw your attention to the transfer from the General Fund and the transfer for the Special Recreation and Parks Fund. Those have both increased this year. The main emphasis of that increase is going to continue to be the Golf Course Improvement Project that we're undertaking, that Clay will speak to. We've increased those amounts to make sure that we have the funds necessary to continue the phasing that they've developed, especially to stay on track to hit their 50th anniversary preparation that they, they've set as a goal. So those have both increased for both the 2022 revised as well as the 2023 number, to make sure that we have the funding necessary to keep that project moving forward. Other than that, most of the revenues stay fairly consistent to the 2021 actuals as well as 2022 budget, budget numbers. Any questions on revenues?
It seems memberships is doing pretty well. It looks like at least above budget for what we have for 2022.
They do, they also, the way they break out the memberships and the golf cart portions of those memberships, you can see there's a 30,000 swing, where the golf cart portion went down for the 2020 revised, for the same 30,000 that the memberships went up. It's more so allocating where those actually come through in those gold memberships. So there is an increase there, but there's an associated decrease on the golf cart portion. So the overall portion is budgeted fairly the same. Any other questions? All right, as we go into Department 711, which is the Pro Shop, here, you can see in the top section, we've added a position. The Second Assistant Golf Professional is budgeted for the 2022 revised. This is another position in the Golf Pro Shop that's able to help. Historically, we've had the Golf Pro and the Assistant Golf Pro. This is a Second Assistant Golf Pro, that's an additional position, a little bit different responsibilities than the Assistant Golf Pro, but they've had increased volume, increased numbers, so they needed the extra help. They also still have their temporary seasonal line that they've used consistently, but this one will be more of that permanent position to be able to be on staff. As you go down, other expenses stay primarily the same. Nothing really jumps out as substantially different than what was either budgeted or historical for the Pro Shop.
Jared, have you generally temporary seasonal people, do they usually bring on?
It kind of depends. The last couple of years has been a little bit of a wild card with COVID and with other, with the hiring issues we've had across the organization. Jason may be able to answer that a little bit better.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are y'all today? Typically, we'll have, in season, we'll have 10 to 12 seasonal employees. They'll work anywhere from 10 to 25 hours a week. Right now, on the shoulder season, we have seven current employees.
The Second Assistant Golf Professional, is that a full-time position, or is that a...?
It is a full-time position, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the Pro Shop? All right, continuing on, we have the Golf Course Maintenance portion of the budget. I will highlight, again, in staffing here, they also, we broke out the Second Assistant Golf Course Superintendent. This is not a new position. We've had an Assistant Golf Course Superintendent, as well as a Second Assistant, but you'll see consistently, as we get into the departments that have staff, we are re-identifying the positions in the codes in these departments to better paint the picture of accurately how many positions we have and what they are and what their titles are to match the information that we've had from McGrath, the PACE study we've done. We've identified that there's a lot of discrepancies in what our budget shows as a name for a position versus what our actual job description shows. So this is a breakout where... So this is a breakout where in the past there were two positions listed under assistant golf course superintendent. We've broken them out further to show that one's the assistant and one's the second assistant. So that budgeted amount for those two together is what was the 90,000 in the original 2022 budget. Going through as well, there are fairly well-consistent numbers across the 2022 revised, some increases for insurance costs. They've also increased the gas, oil, and diesel just like we have on all the other departments due to the increased costs currently. And then in this department, there's new equipment. Other, they have been consistently looking for new equipment. Their original budget was 65,000 for 2022. That's staying consistent and there's 75,000 budgeted for 2023. I believe Clay could highlight if I'm wrong, but I believe that's for some roller units and rough unit. He spoke last year a little bit about how with the course improvements and changes, they are able to get different equipment than they've had in the past that has some cost savings because it doesn't need to cover as much ground. But those both are the, to replace their equipment replacement plan is ready to have some of these items be replaced and they've reached their life. I would also just show that the transfer golf course buildings and grounds has a transfer which wasn't budgeted for 2022 of 30,000 that's associated with the increases from the transfer to the general fund and the Parks and Rec. This amount goes to the next department or the next budget for the 071 golf course building and grounds, which is where the cost of the course improvement plan has been going on. So this 30,000 is covering the cost for this phase and then the 30,000 for 2023 will continue to be for the next phase of that course improvement. So those are transferred to the next fund, which is the 071. Questions on any of the maintenance budget before we move to 071?
So I was curious about, because the fertilizer I was expecting an increase in, but I thought those costs had increased. Have they not increased substantially?
I think they probably have increased some. The golf course has a fairly tight budget, so some of the absorption of the increased costs they do have, they throughout the year adjust by under utilizing other areas where they can cut some costs. And Clay can speak to that when he comes up.
Yeah, so fertilizers across the board, chemical fungicides have all increased significantly. We're hoping that trends down as you start to see supply re-enter our country. But with that being said, through the course improvement plan, we are able to, because we're not applying to so many acres, we're able to hold steady on that budget line item.
So with the difference of grass, what is the difference in chemical application that we've been, or we expect to see when we're done? You know what I mean?
Done with the.
When done with it, were you doing the grass?
Sure, yeah. So with the course improvement plan, we have identified 16 to 20 acres of currently irrigated bluegrass. We're utilizing that bluegrass in other spots during the course improvement plan. But also, once we've taken them to a different site, we are now planting non-irrigated native grasses. The savings we expect through that won't be as much through fertilizer as it will be 16 hours a week labor savings, 16 to 20 million gallons of water savings. So the chemical line isn't going to fluctuate as much as we'll see that really affected in other areas.
Thank you.
And Clay, can you speak to the new equipment? Was I correct on the rough unit and the roller? Is there something different?
Yeah, so that was previously, that was what was purchased this season. Next season, to give an example of how machinery costs have went up and we don't expect them to trend down like the fertilizer, we are planning to buy a triplex mower, which is the smallest unit we have. We bought two of them four years ago for 54,000 and we believe that one unit will cost roughly the same now. So because of that, we're starting to look into other technologies and exploring options. The traditional equipment is just getting too expensive for us to purchase, so we're looking in other spots.
Okay, if no other questions, move on to 071, which is the golf course building. You'll see here that the incomes, there's a small income for transfer fees and then the main income is that transfer from the golf course fund to keep this project moving forward. The costs for 2022 are anticipated to be 37,000 approximately and as well as 2023. And that includes the costs for the design of the phase as well as the typically rental of some excavators and some equipment that's used to do the removal of sod and moving of the, design of the new holes and irrigation costs that they've been inputting. And I think I would have Clay speak first and kind of just, one thing I asked him to highlight was the emphasis of the course improvement plan of what's been going on, give an update of where we're at, as well as just hit on the cost savings of what our internal process and, you know, this $30,000 transfer, what would that constitute if we were outsourcing all of this work being done in order to have the same effective redesign of our golf course?
So I'm super excited to talk to you guys about this project. Before we get going, I would like to take a moment to highlight the people that are behind this project. My staff includes Mitch Chalkley, Ross Miller, Brock Walter, Mike Mathias, Bob Lemel, and a few seasonals. This is a very small staff that came up with the vision of this course improvement plan. You know that it's one thing to dream and it's another thing to take it into action. So the sacrifice that these individuals are doing every fall is quite exceptional and the public is reaping the benefit from that. So we've talked a little bit about dreams, but the reality is the last two years we've completed two of six phases. That includes seven greens and green surrounds, 19 bunkers, and a handful of tees. These have all been funded through carryover, budget savings through our budget as well as Jason's. To date, we've spent $63,000 on these improvements. A conservative estimate, if we were to outsource it, would be north of 800,000. These savings that we're doing by this staff are just starting to show, but we'll be able to really show off some very cool stats in the years to come. One being the 16 to 20 million gallons of water saved annually. Another one with the new grass that we're growing on-site. We planted every spring for $1,300. Market value, that's about $130,000 worth of sod if we were to buy it. But the first year that we have all of that new turf on the greens, we expect to see a return in fungicide savings to cover all of the plantings. That's the first year after that we're playing with house money, so it's going to be quite nice to see. Yeah, labor savings with the native conversions. So environmentally, it's been a very big success. Our public is reaping the rewards from a better surface, just a better experience out there. And we've seen, we've been very proud of Buffalo Dunes locally. Nationally, we're starting to get on that stage as well, so we hope to continue to bring individuals into Garden City and just be one of the right points.
I like the new sign, too.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
It's exciting that other places are recognizing your efforts though, too, especially the cost-saving efforts. I wouldn't be surprised if there weren't more other golf courses that come and just try to glean your knowledge.
What we're doing is not normal.
Right, exactly.
It's going to be extremely difficult to replicate. And if it is replicated, it's going to cost significantly more than what we're doing it for. But we like to obviously keep the monies low to produce this product and provide an affordable service. You don't need to have a lot of money to have the best golf experience possible, so.
So I'm curious about your team, because the team sounds like it really, they really enjoy working together and they're super efficient and really skilled. So what's your, what's some of the things you're doing to make how this team continues and keeps together and keeps really moving forward on this course improvement plan?
Sure, so I've talked about the vision initially. This isn't Clay Payne's vision or Jason Hayes' vision. This is our vision and they have the buy-in at that point. You know, so every day we have a little saying that we get 1% better. It keeps this big project doable. We're able to slowly improve, but by continuously improving each day over a year, it becomes something notable. So they've really bought into that.
And I would say from a budgeting standpoint, it's impressive that the funding has come so far from the budget savings of the golf course itself. From a long-term perspective, that's not necessarily going to continue to be feasible. We do anticipate these later phases having a higher ticket, a higher price associated with them. And that's where that increased funding from those two transfers is going to really help. But the golf course has done a remarkable job of keeping their costs low and trying to find cost savings at every step of the way they can to be able to continue to move this project along. So hats off to them for the effort that they've put in across the board.
I know they're doing a new build, while you're working on raising, how's the new building? I know it's not part of the budget, but I'm curious about the new building and where that's at.
So Jason can comment a little bit more on that, but they have, Friends of Buffalo Dunes has started to, they've identified a site where they would want to go and are in the initial stages of developing that plan and how to raise the funds to make it happen. And that's, once that's complete with this golf course improvement plan, there's not going to be very many facilities that are comparable.
Yep.
Any other questions for Clay? If not, we'll turn it over to Jason who's prepared to speak a little bit about kind of just the ongoing numbers and information for the golf course from the pro shop.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. It's good to be in front of y'all like always. Like Clay says, we've got a passion for Buffalo Dunes and what's happened over the last four or five years has just been amazing. And what's trending in the future is the upside's phenomenal, so I'm pretty excited. Year-to-date, I think when Clay and I first got here in 2017, we had done roughly 14,500 rounds. Last year, we did 19,380. We're up 12% year-to-date already this year, up about 500 rounds compared to this time last year. Green fee, cart fee revenue are up tremendously also. Memberships, I think Mayor Dick, you asked a question about memberships. Year-to-date, memberships are up about $8,000 compared to this time last year and that trend is, I think, going to continue. We've, on my side, programming for junior golf or women's golf continues to increase. We, you know, we finished last week, the Epsom Tour, came to Garden City for the Garden City Tournament Classic. It was phenomenal. There's a lot of little backstories that come to light that were really cool. One of our high school golfers, Maddox Shook, caddied for the winner of the tournament, Gabriella Ten. And they're just different things like that. Garden City Community College is going to be starting a women's program in August of 2022. There's just, I mean, things are great. I think we helped last year on the travel side of hosting golf tournaments and everything like that. We raised over $200,000 for local charities. So it's, I mean, it's fun to be a part of. And like Clay said, most of the savings in these first two or three phases of the project, we've saved in our budget and moved over. And like his team is phenomenal. I've got a fantastic team. I lost one team member to South Wind Golf and Dining Board. Rich Powers now they have crew over there, but that's awesome. That's, I mean, that's what we're supposed to do is groom guys and then get them to the next level. I've got a great team right now, Nathan Roy and Ryan Jenkins, who is our new second assistant. So things are fantastic. We're a little worn out after last week, but it was a great week. We've hosted seven events already. We've had the Eagles Bulldog scramble. We had a couple other scrambles and then we went into the KCAC Conference Championship, which is a Kansas Christian Athletic Conference. They played 72 holes with us this year. They normally play 54. Then right after that, we jumped into Central Links. It was called the Senior Four Ball and Team Mid-Amateur Championship. That was something new. That come to Garden City, we had 100 players from all over the state, Kansas City, Wichita. Fantastic reviews on the golf course. And then we jumped right into Epsom Week. So it's been a kind of a whirlwind the last couple of weeks out there, so.
So how many, for the tournament, I keep on calling it in my mind, symmetra, but for Epsom, how many golfers came out?
So this was actually the first full-field event that they had this year. We had 144 ladies.
And that's a worldwide draw?
Yes, we had, I think there were 19 different countries. I think we had, I think Texas and California had the most players from any of the states. We had a couple of local girls from Topeka and I believe Wichita that played in the event. So it's pretty amazing. I mean, they were from China, Australia, Sweden, Belgium, I mean, Mexico. We had a player from Guatemala. I mean, it's amazing what comes to Garden City to play that week.
I was going to say that the coverage is not just local, it's worldwide. When you go look at what's going on, I mean, our name's coming up in newspapers. I mean, not just American, like internationally, too, with that tournament. That's a huge deal.
Yeah, it's my opinion, it's the second-best women's tour in the world next to the LPGA Tour, so. Thank you all.
No, thank you. You have good work.
Thank you.
Are we moving on to 75?
Yep.
Do you mind if we take a five-minute break before we go to 75?
That's fine.
Is that fine with you?
Absolutely.
Everybody else? So come back, I'll just say four minutes, that makes it even time. Can we resume here at 2:50?
Sounds good.
Is that fine? You got a lot of that? Since we're taking a recess for four minutes. So you're back in about four minutes?
Yeah, sounds good.
Yep.
Shh, don't tell anybody. It's a coordination thing.
Well, have a minute. According to that clock. I mean, it's not an executive session, but I still feel like we should start when we said we. I mean, I just got back from the mayor's conference. It's good to keep things when you say, okay, two fifty.
All right, continuing on, we have Fund Zero Seven Five, which is the solid waste fund. Starting off, you have our revenues in the first section. We anticipate those to continue to rise in 2022 as well as 2023. If you look at the historicals, 2020, with COVID, we did see a decrease due to some of the businesses not having trash being shut down for a while. And so those, we anticipate coming back up to kind of the historical numbers, if not increase a little bit beyond what they have historically been. Moving into the solid waste operations budget, you continue to see here, we've we've not added any positions. The twenty-twenty, the twenty-two authorized positions has stayed consistent, but we are breaking these out along with other funds. So the solid waste foreman is being broken out, where it has historically been included with the solid waste drivers. And then down at the bottom, the solid waste superintendent and the public works operations managers, those titles are being changed on the budget forms to match the titling of the job descriptions that we currently have. So those are just adaptations and changes from from what you've seen historically. So the budgeted amount for the 2022 revised for solid waste driver is decreased sixty thousand from the 2022 budget number to accommodate that solid waste foreman budget line. And then going forward, those will stay, continue to be broken out. There's also a change when you, included in the total salaries and benefits, we have a transfer for office salaries. Historically, the city has had franchise fee costs that the electric, water, and the solid waste department have contributed. There's also a cost for the office salaries administration for the utilities that electric and solid waste have, electric and water have paid. That is at a six percent of their collections, of their revenues, but solid waste has not been included in that. We're making the change to include solid waste in that office salary transfer cost as well, since the administration of the billing, the utility outsourcing, all of the the collections for those solid wastes are being done through the same function as what the electric and and water have paid. And so we're beginning, and this is a three percent breakout of the revenues for 2022 revised as well as the 2023, and over the next few years, we'll step that up to get it to six percent as well to match what we do with our other utility funds. There's also a new GL line when you look at the contracted utility bill outsourcing under contractual with a twenty-two thousand for 2022 and twenty-three thousand in 2023. This, historically, the utility bills that are prepared and mailed out to customers are prepared by a third party, and the costs for that have been being split by the electric and the water departments. We're also segregating that out to be split into night, thirty, thirty, thirty percent from electric, water, as well as solid waste, so that they can take on some of that cost. And then the stormwater is going to pay the ten percent cost we'll see in that budget as well. And so that's a new a new line here for those costs, and it's a decreased amount in electric and water, so they're not having to to take on the entirety of that that cost. Along that as well, you'll see that an increase in the 2022 number for the training and education line. That is because the cost for the echelon front training that the city is incorporating is being split across electric, water, solid waste, and the general fund. And so this is a twenty-five percent portion of our our annual cost. And then the 2023 number is higher due to the ongoing costs of that training being split as well. And then I'll just highlight, and Mike can speak to this as well in a moment, but the the other increase you'll see in the solid waste operations is when you get down to the new equipment vehicle line. The twenty-two budget number stays the same at two hundred and ninety thousand, but we see a steep increase to seven hundred and eighty-one thousand for the 2023 new equipment vehicle, and that has to do with the six hundred and fifty thousand budgeted amount for replacing three of the CNG trash trucks. The other elements and items being replaced are consistent with the plan that we have, and they're they're listed there on the bottom left of that page. But that is a steep increase to to have the full function turnover from those CNG trucks.
And we're going back to diesel trucks?
And these will not be replaced with CNG, correct?
Right, okay.
Got it, Mike? Moving on to this recycling, you see additional breakout, the recycling driver and recycling supervisor titles have changed. Those were, are updates to make them more reflective of what they should be apart from what they were in the past. So those budget numbers haven't changed, but just the titles on the left have. And apart from that, recycling really has stayed fairly consistent. The the costs haven't fluctuated a whole lot in that that budget. Any questions for me on the solid waste operations or or recycling budget numbers?
One thing that just looked a little bit higher than I was expecting was the phone, and maybe it's been like this for all of them, but traditionally, the phone, shoot, I had it up.
The telephone expense?
Yeah. Which is?
I have fifteen hundred?
Yeah, it's a bunch of fifteen, and before that, it had been nine hundred or that. It just seems like a fifty percent jump in one year is is a new provider?
Yeah, I think I think the budget, we we keep a little higher on that than the actuals. If you look back at 2020, eleven forty-one was a little higher. With us switching to the My Telephones a few years ago, our telephone costs did decrease substantially, but I think as we've rolled out, sometimes if we set up new new telephones, there's a potential for for increased cost there. So I think that budget is just a little bit conservative to stay higher than the actual of 2021, but that variation of five hundred dollars, if we added a few lines, it really would jump jump that up to to cover that, so. Any other questions? If not, Mike has, Mike can speak a little bit on the on the CNG trucks and the plan there as far as other other tidbits on solid waste.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The those CNG trucks, we have, there's twelve solid waste trucks in that fleet. Seven of them are CNG compressed natural gas. There's one location in town where we can get fuel at the Spark location at Fulton and Fleming, or Fulton and Campus. The, we we continue to have considerable issues with the CNG trucks. The latest one is going to cost us about forty-five thousand dollars to repair the engine in it due to a high combustion issue with the natural gas. The natural gas trucks don't have the same horsepower as the diesel trucks do, and we're running out of issues, well, we're running into issues. We've had them since we got it, of being able to pull themselves out of the landfill, and the landfill is, I mean, they don't make a lot of waves about it, but they have to pull us out or push us out of the landfill. So the intent, if you remember back, we came in and we bid out a solid waste truck, and it was seventy weeks out for delivery. The reason we've decided to ask for this into 2023 is to prepare for, should we get into that same situation? We'll do the homework ahead of time, but if that's the case, we may very well have to bid those in advance to get them, or it could be that the lease that we're trying out right now may work more beneficial. If that's the case, that number would go down significantly on those trucks. Also, on the engineering fees, we have two hundred thousand dollars in there. That's the money that we, that's the fund that we use for the Public Works Combined Facility. As you know, we did the space needs analysis, and that's been completed. We have just completed the site survey of that city property east of the Utility Service Center. So the next steps now are, we will sit down with the architect and lay out the utilities, drainage, possible street extensions, et cetera, and then start figuring the best placement for some of these buildings. And then we'll come back to the commission probably in late 2022, early 2023, mid, mid 2023, to talk about funding for the whole facility, so. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jared.
Yep. Thanks, Mike.
All right, as a total, in that fund, you can see that there's the cash forward into 2023, anticipated is three million one ninety-one, so even with the increased purchases of the seven hundred thousand, there's a healthy cash balance of the solid waste fund that we'll be budgeting but planning to have as a cash forward. For the next fund is Zero Seven Nine is the Drainage Utility. You can see that we start off with two hundred and eighty-four thousand for the cash balance of the 2022. Our revenues are staying fairly consistent with what they have been in the past. We are changing the the title listed on the salary here, has been a Stormwater Project. It's now a project manager. That matches, this is a position that's in Neighborhood Development Services, it's paid for out of this fund, and the title that that position is is part project manager, so this is matching that that structure there. It would also draw your attention, there's an increase for the contracted contractors' line, as well as an increase over the, well, a decrease there, then an increase in the contracted projects line. We have talked to you in the past and bonded out in the 2021 GeoBond, the Fulton Street Drainage Project, there's six hundred thousand dollars, that's the city's portion for that project. Well, with costs increasing, we anticipate that our portion has increased, and so there's an additional, anticipated seventy-five thousand dollars that we're budgeting right now for that project, and that's going to be taken out of this fund in that contracted projects line. The the other six hundred thousand is available and ready in the GeoBond funds, and there's a million that KDOT's going to put forth, but this is just the the difference. So if we do have increased costs, it will adjust and come out of that line as well. And then above that, there's the contracted utility utility bill outsourcing, that's the new GL for that split of the utility bill preparation. And this is, represents ten percent of the annual cost of all of that. The rest of that budget probably really is staying fairly similar to the past, and at the end of 2023, we anticipate two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and one dollars as a cash cash carryover. Any questions on on that fund? All right, that's all I've got for you today. I didn't quite hit my one-minute-per-page in the depths of the break, but pretty close. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
So that leaves us with the consent agenda. Unless we want to pull out any other items, the proper motion would be to approve items G two through G nine.
I move that we approve consent agenda items.
Twelve G.
G two through, twelve G two through nine.
On second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. All right, I believe that's the end of business?
Yes, no more business items on the agenda, so that brings us to commissioner reports.
All right, I'll do commissioner reports, and typically, mayor goes last, but this time I will go first, and we'll just go down through the order here. So I'd like to take a minute to address Commissioner Undery's guilty plea to Mr. Mainer theft. First, I'd like to express sympathy for everyone affected by this matter. It is never easy to have to deal with situations like these, and I hope we are at a time of resolution, learning, healing, and progress. I recognize that there are two sides to every story, but I'd like to address that these charges are serious in a black eye. It is a black eye for anyone who's seated as a commissioner to be guilty of any misdemeanor, this charge or others. However, this case does not directly involve the city, and as such, I feel that there's limited options that the city commission has in a situation such as this. Any office change can only be initiated or and carried out by the public or through voluntary resignation. As such, I expect and hope that every commissioner will move forward together as we grow our community. I'm committed, and I hope our other commissioners are, to see that we, that the will of the public is upheld, and so I feel that we need to both recognize the situation, but also act as a unified governing body when it comes to the business decisions for Garden City. Thank you. Commissioner Undery.
So, um. Let me just take a minute here. There are lots of sides to lots of stories, but I'm not going to comment on any of those here. It's a private matter and not anything of public record, and so as far as it didn't involve the city at all. I do want to go ahead and say thank you to all of the the work that's been done today. I really appreciate the work that the code enforcement did today. I think they did a really good job of really anticipating, how can we really make our city move forward? And I really, I appreciate Trent's whole department. I think they do a really good job in making sure that our city not only looks good, but also is safe, and also is a really good place to live. I do want to just congratulate the new advisory committee members. I'm excited about your desire to serve on advisory committee in the city. And I also want to thank the police and EMS recently, they both showed up and to help my dad who had fallen and had broke his ankle, and so both of them working together, they did an awesome job. He was able to get to the hospital, and so everything has been taken care of. But the way that our police and EMS and our first responders work together, I really appreciate it. My heart goes out to the people in the Andover tornado. I know that natural disasters are never easy, and you know, when you think about the the amount of damage, I'm so grateful that no life was lost, but you think about the amount of damage that was caused by the tornadoes and just the upheaval in people's lives, I'm really grateful for good neighbors and people who really work hard here to make sure that their neighbors are taken care of. Recently, there was a citywide day of service, and I know a lot of churches came together to work on different people's homes. And so I thought one thing during the code enforcement presentation, I thought was really interesting, that that might be an opportunity for the ministry or alliance or organizations such as that to really come together to help people who just need a little bit as far as help, they don't need a lot of dollars, but they just need help. And I know a lot of, a lot of churches were able to do some really simple things, mowing lawns, picking up trash, repairing fences, moving some items that were too heavy for some residents, but again, I think it's this idea of really coming together as a city. So I'm really excited about this fall. I know that there's lots of really neat things coming up, and I'm excited about the way that we are moving together as a city. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve as commissioner, and I don't take that lightly. And I'm so grateful for those who, being an elected official, I realize that there's a lot of responsibility, and I'm grateful for the the trust and the confidence, and also the hope for the future that they place to me.
Commissioner Cessna.
Good job to Stuart on running the meeting today. You got you got through it. You just have a little bit further to go. Good job to the mayor on all of the proclamations that he had to get through, so kudos. As well, you know, our thoughts and prayers do go out to the people in Andover. You know, that city's going to be affected for many years to come. Back in the early nineties, you know, they they went through a tornado, and it took them a while to get back, but again, you know, a lot of thoughts and prayers, and if you see the devastation, it's it's pretty substantial for that community. As the mayor proclaimed, it's municipal clerks' week, and want to give a very special shout out to our very own city clerk, Ceylin, for being, she's been the city clerk since 2012 and also willing to serve on many other ways outside of her duties. She organizes United Way fundraisers for city employees, mentors new employees, and extends a helping hand to anyone who asks, and thank you for all you do for the commission as well as the city. It's Teachers Appreciation Week this week. Teachers are appreciated all year long, but this week, we really do recognize and celebrate all of our exceptional teachers for educating our children, and I encourage everyone to thank a teacher this week. Good pre-meeting this morning, reviewing code enforcement. Yes, we've had a number of people step forward and bring up some concerns to the commission, but it's good to get that educational process, get that education on on the various areas of the city. So very good pre-meeting on that. Want to thank Commissioner Pishney for addressing the Blackbird issue, and not only the county, but the city as well, and hopefully we can come together and resolve that issue that we have in the county and city. As we're getting closer to the end of the school year, registration for students for the next school year, for the districts opening up on Thursday, so we're looking at getting students registered for the next school year. This weekend is the Garden City Achieve, as well as Virtual Academy Graduation, so we see a lot of students graduating at this time of the year. Also, the high school graduation ceremony will take place on Saturday, May fourteenth, at ten o'clock. The Garden City Achieve graduation's at ten thirty this weekend, May fourteenth at ten o'clock in the morning in the gym at the high school. Speaking of graduation, I noticed as I was up at the high school the other day, the snow fence has blown over with the continual winds that we have, so I was just wondering if we could get a crew up there to maybe get that removed before graduation. We're trying to spruce everything up.
It's still May, we might have snow.
I don't know. I don't know, yeah.
Yes, Commissioner, it didn't quite blow hard enough to blow it completely away. I know the crew is scheduled to go up there this week and remove that, and we have some, on some other parts of town that we're gonna, they'll start removing those, so thanks for bringing it up.
No, thank you.
Yep.
Yep. And yeah, there is a snowplow sitting at the high school, and I know that there'll be, the art department will be trying to work on that and get a design on that, so we can get that shown off. Attended the groundbreaking event at Hunter's Glen Edition. What a great addition that that will be for our community and housing. I also attended the soft opening of Napoleon's Restaurant at its new location here in town, which is dangerous because I'll probably, instead of having to drive out to the airport, it's closer now. And so I'll probably be gaining a lot more weight that way, attending that restaurant. Glad to see it's opening here in the community. Kind of sad to see that we've lost a restaurant out, out at the airport, but with all the approvals that we made today on the construction of a new terminal, we'll have a new face and a new front door for our community, so glad to see that. Yeah, in light of what has been brought, and I've had a number of comments and questions brought to me forth about the situation we have. And I've just kind of really posed this question to the commission. In light of this, and maybe for future commissions, would, would it be pertinent if we have staff researching and having maybe the commission adopt a code of ethics? I sit on a number of commission, or a, a number of boards and other committees where, and even running for city commission, you have to sign and you have to abide by a code of ethics through the state as running for, for office, but just a thought process, and maybe something that we need to look at, and just something to pose for, for this commission, and something to think about for future commissions. And that's all I've got.
That's good. Well, I enjoyed going to Charles Stones last week to the Arbor Day celebration, where, where the mayor got to help plant a tree and read the proclamation. And I watched all the fifth graders in the school help plant the tree. It was, it was a lot of fun to watch, and, and I know that they enjoyed it, and then they all have little trees that they received, and hopefully, they planted those. There were a few trees that came out of the bag, and we're not sure where they went, probably with the snow fence. And so, so there'll be new trees in the community. And then I had a chance to go to the zoo this weekend with my granddaughter, and that was a lot of fun to, to see, you know, everything that they've done, and enjoyed that, and it, it looks beautiful. And it's just, there are a lot of families out there, and that's what I think I love the most, is the fact that it was a weekend. It was a nice day. There were lots and lots of families out and enjoying the zoo, and also commenting on how beautiful it was. And so it was just a, you know, source of pride. It's also exciting to be moving forward on the airport project, and to be able to approve all of the task orders and other contracts that Rochelle was able to bring to us today. And, and I look forward to seeing that process move forward, and I, I'm excited to have the beautiful terminal here in, in Garden City. You know, it's kind of another window to what our community looks like. And yes, congratulations to Ceylin Municipal Clerk, Clerk Week. But then also, I wanted to welcome Cory Longoria as the deputy city clerk. And it's, it's fun to have a, a couple of people even and the color coordination thing is just a bonus. Must mean you did, you made a very good hire. And then, of course, Public Works Drinking Water Week and the Police Week. And so I'll be reading the proclamation to that as well next week. And I did want to also thank the mayor for addressing the issue. We, you know, when you have people come up to you in the community and ask questions, sometimes it's hard to know what to say in return. And because it was a private matter, and it didn't have anything to do with the city, by my view on it is that, I know I have a lot of respect for everybody on the commission. And one of the things that we do really well is, is when we make a vote, I mean, that's the, the way it is. And we have that ability to work together and to agree and disagree. But at the end of the day, when those seeds of doubt are planted, it is hard to know just how to move forward. But I know that I can assure the public that this is a functioning commission, and that we are still united, and we will work together going forward. And that's all I have on that.
All right, sounds good. We are done.